All right, good evening everyone. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the School District, the North Fond du Lac, to order with a roll call vote please.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Golubski, Spock.
Yes.
Stephbacher.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Record a public notice please.
Yes, President Chisholm, public notices were mailed to KFIZ 107.1 The Bold, along with the Fond du Lac reporter, and also to Sunny 97, as well as posted at the district offices, the village municipal offices, and US Bank, and that was on Friday, October 19th of the year of 2018.
All right, thank you very much. So please rise for President Chisholm.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You ready, Ron? Mr. Seto, would you please administer the oath of office to our newly minted board member?
I will, I will. Somebody wouldn't mind getting a picture, but if you would, please. Paul Stephbacher. All right, so do you want to read or do you just want to repeat? You read it a little bit like it's hard. So what I'd like you to do, if you would, here, turn so we can get you on the camera. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Paul Stephbacher.
I, Paul Stephbacher.
Have been appointed by the Board of Education.
Who has been appointed by the Board of Education.
To the Office of School Board Member.
To the Office of School Board Member.
But have not yet entered.
But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will.
Swear that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well done. If you would, we'll make it official. Congratulations. All right, if you would, sign up top here, and then we'll send them to the district clerk. We'll sign, we'll keep one for our records, and then we'll allow Ms. Paula Stephbacher to keep one for her records. All right, thank you. And then Clerk Golubski, if you wouldn't mind getting one of these back to Board Member Stephbacher.
All right. Pictures are on their way.
Cool, thank you.
All right, very good. Next item of agenda, uh, business on the agenda is.
Watson, should I introduce your sister?
All right, this is my sister Amy. She actually is an employee of the Fond School District and has supported me in obviously going forward and doing this.
Oh, okay. Next item of agenda is appointing of the treasurer, and I see you were being coached as to the treasurer's report. So is that a presidential appointment?
It is.
All right, so I hereby appoint our newly minted board member, Ms. Stephbacher, to be the school board treasurer, so.
Thank you.
The minutes were distributed in the board packet to all the members. Anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were published? Seeing none, then I'll stand and approve this president. Next on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
Um, if that's okay, but they have treasurer, I will take over for that since this is your first time, and I will model. Proud has been done in the past, if that is okay to your.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, cash unbalanced, September 24, 2018, $187,260.85 total receipts of $1,671,843.39. Those were made up of receipts of $784,582.54 and a transfer from investment accounts of $700,000. Our expenditures for the month of September 25 through October 22 were $1,420,978.53. Thus, the cash balance on time as of today, $250,864.86. If you'll then go to the back, to the next page of the treasurer's report, at this time, the motion will be, if somebody makes a motion, for pre-approved checks of $755,841.91, board meeting checks of $447,672.57, for a total bill to be approved at this board meeting of $1,203,514.48.
Thank you. So the list of pre-approved checks and expenses were also distributed in members' packet. Does anyone have any questions for the expenses that were distributed? All right, seeing none, then what's the board's pleasure on the $1,203,514.85 expenditures?
I will make a motion.
A second. Okay, would be seconded to approve the expenses. Any other questions? Seeing none, a roll call vote please.
Pack.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Golubski, yes, Stephbacher, yes.
All right, motion carries, seeing none of this. Next on the agenda is the clerk's report. Do you have anything to report for this?
I have nothing today, thank you.
Nothing, all right. Item J, Student Council Report. I see Dominic must be tied up doing something this evening.
Dominic is actually sick today, so just because of everything that everybody else going on, they shared their report with me, so sorry, stuck with me. I know he did a really good job last time, and I shared that with him. So student council events, homecoming events were a huge success this year with approximately 50% participation. Each dress-up day, spirit dress winners were the juniors, spirit stick winners were the seniors, as it should be, they said. Spirit hall banner winners were the sophomores, spirit float winners were the freshmen. Winning the spirit Olympics this year through a tiebreaker decision was the seniors. Notice they did not put powder puff in this report. Oops. The month of October will be March with our annual spook-a-gram sale and the student council-sponsored pumpkin decorating contest. Pumpkins will be displayed and voted on October 30th. National Honor Society events in Key Club. National Honor Society students completed required activities by having some fun, Halloween fun with the kindergartners, and we shared some great pictures from that event. Students spent time reading the kindergartner's story and doing a craft project with them. We also took about 70 students on Friday, October the 12th, to Feed My Starving Children. I was lucky enough to be part of that group. Just a phenomenal, it's like a conveyor belt once they get us started, and we pack as many meals as we can in an hour, hour and a half time period, and they shared with us that we, they actually slowed us down at the end because we were such a fast packing group. They had 134 people present. We had packed 191 boxes, which fed 41,256 meals, which meant that 103 kids had enough to eat for a year. So they're very impressed with that. We are trying to get the organization to use us as a host in the future because we feel like we could book enough hours, and it's just, we took kids from National Honor Society, Key Club, also our special education, WOTEC program, our life skills students, and a few others mingled in there, and it just was a really good group for everyone to see what a great event it is. Key Club events, Key Club students attended the Halloween hike at Mothy Lake on Friday the 19th. They served as tour guides, character actors, and craft leaders. Other Key Club volunteer opportunities are the trick-or-treat, Unisup boxes, Norfond-Lac Optimist Pancake Breakfast, blood drive planning, and tutoring. And then today, I kind of filled in for Dominic as well. Student council started a student concerns group, and they really didn't have a whole lot today, so I kind of pulled some things from them, different things for us to look at with homecoming, lunch, relocated a couple of things, and they gave some suggestions for our oral time and a few things. So I'm putting together with them a student survey to kind of see, you know, what everyone else's perception is of the high school. So, great group. And that is it.
What was the name of the packing the box organization?
Um, it's called Feed My Starving Children.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Where do the deals go to? Are they local or?
No, um, they go, let me look that up while you're talking.
Well, actually, I can comment on that.
Thank you.
Shalom actually went on a mission trip in El Salvador, and she not only got to pack it at the Fond du Lac fairgrounds through a youth group, but then she got to pass it out when she was in El Salvador.
Oh, nice, nice, nice.
So she, it was fun for her to be full circle on that.
That's very good. Originally, Leah Tweedy was the young lady who brought it and shared it with Mrs. Hinz, that she said, hey, we just have to do this, because she had, I think, done through mission and through church, so. And they, the mix that we pack is a package of rice and soy and vitamins and something else. And then they have two other products that they do, kind of, you know, one if you're allergic to soy, and then one for babies, so, yeah, great, great experience.
All right, any other questions? You purposely left out powder puff, who won the game?
It was not the seniors.
It was overtemp, it was amazing game. It really was.
Well, I don't know who the group was, but like I said, I shared before, I saw them out in the practice field for weeks before homecoming, on Sunday morning practicing.
We got this girl, I'll just say her first name, Becca. She could start for football. She's got some hands and some height on her.
Kingflint?
Oh, yeah. Now, King Girl could throw the ball too, so I do not see when they're seniors. I think it's going to be a problem next year, so. I can tell sophomores.
Katie is trying to find a powder puff slash fall event, them against teachers. Yeah. I do not have any volunteers at this time.
None of, as Alex, one of our insurance consultant said, there won't be anybody here with their workers.
No, 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 no.
So that'll all be volunteers from outside of the district, and this will happen not on district level. Yeah, got you, yes.
All right, if there's no other questions, to the student council report, next is on the agenda is citizens' input portion of the meeting. At 7:19, I declare the citizens' input portion of the meeting open. And anyone here who is a citizen of the district is welcome to address the board at this time. Seeing none, I will declare the citizens' input portion of the meeting closed at 7:20. Thank you. And item L, super town support.
Thank you.
Take it away.
President Chisholm, appreciate it. We've got a couple of things going on here. First off, we just had our facility committee meeting, had really good, I think, attendance. That was nice. That PowerPoint will be going online within the week. I also will send it out as a PDF to all of the people that are on the committee, so people have access to that also. So we're on track, we're looking good, and I'm very proud of the district and our construction and our design partners for what they're doing, and so, looking good. So if there's any other questions, I know the majority were here, but I'll get that out to everybody so that they can see what's going on. Board members that were there, June Wantu, or even Mary, Dave, anybody part of the facilities, Carrie, Joe, want to mention anything about the meeting or the process?
I thought it was a good update.
All right, cool. All right, so then we have a couple of things that we're going to get to, but before that, we're fortunate enough to have Alex, who is our, one of our main consultant contact at the Horton Group. Maria and I and Bonnie have been working with Alex for a couple of years now, and we have learned, I would put up our team against any other team when it comes to insurance and our ability to stay the course and get some really good deals. Matter of fact, we wouldn't even be here if one insurance company would have told us what we wanted to hear, and now they lost out apparently. But what I'm going to do is turn it over to Alex. We didn't know if we would have a recommendation for insurance, but remember, our goals have always been that we want our employees to have access to high care physicians, so if we wouldn't move any physician or any insurance, they'd have still that same access. We don't want to have any lesser in benefits unless it's something understood that we get a return on those, and we want to keep, have as many value-added things as we possibly can for wellness, so we can work on, because we know a claim's a claim's a claim. We also know that there's only two ways to save on insurance, number one, usage, number two is wellness. So understanding our journey we've been on, we are currently with WCA, Wisconsin County Health Trust, and, associates in GHT. Alex has done some due diligence. I'm going to let him walk you guys through the journey that we have been on for the past couple of weeks. I also, once he's done, so we're going to spell him with questions, ask him whatever you want right now. I would recommend, as you're listening, so listen very keenly, that I think we do have an opportunity to make a motion on insurance tonight, if the board feels okay doing that. I have that already listed as one of our new items. If the board does not want to, we can always have a special meeting next week to take care of that. So we do have a lot of options. What happened in the past six hours has changed our recommendation big time, and I've also, we learned a lot about insurance companies. So pass it over to Alex.
All right, so Aaron, thank you for the introduction. So a little bit of a quick overview on how we got here, and then I'm going to dive into the proposals much more in depth than that. Turn it over to any question you have about what we as Horton Group are recommending on what Fond du Lac does. Our initial renewal came in from WCA at plus 8%. We did some negotiations, and then we thought we had had it down to 5%, which I believe is what Aaron told the board the last time you guys got together. Well, there was some miscommunication between WCA and the Horton Group, and actually, they were not willing to come down to the 5, they were going to stand pat at the 8. So we told them if they could not get down to 5, we were going to be out to the market. One thing, just to give you a heads up so you can quantify what that means, every percentage is above $20,000. So when you're at 8, that's $160,000 increase, when you're at 5, that's $100,000 increase. So just kind of in your conceptual mind, when you look at percentages, each percentage currently right now equates to about a $20,000 increase or decrease.
And that's $20,000 overall distributed.
But between what the district pays and what employees pay. So everything you're going to see on these spreadsheets is combined between the employees' premium contribution and what the district pays for health benefits.
And there's nothing looking to change at that, so it's sort of just, so on the big scheme of things, understand that when we look at this, any insurance increases, the district pays that increase, and the employee, if they pay $100 a month, they would pay $105 a month or $108, depending on whatever that percentage is. So understand that percentage increases the district share along with the employee's share. What Alex is going to talk about is the district isn't looking to change the 5 or the 10%, excuse me, of what the employees are looking for, not looking at changing any designs. So what the big part is, is that for cost-wise sake, about that $20,000 per percentage, and any percentage increase not only increases what the district does, but it also increases the employee's share.
While this was all happening, Horton does an internal audit every year on where our money is coming in. So we get, we collect commissions, and we also have fee agreements, those are kind of our two sources of revenue. We currently have a contract in place to collect a fee for our services directly from the district. During our audit, we discovered when we changed to WCA last year, they were also paying us commissions, so we're getting double paid, which obviously is not right. So we are going to rectify that. Now, there are very strict laws on how we can return that money, so what we have decided to do is we are going to waive our fee for next year, so we are not going to be paid in 2019, our $24,000 fee, and then any money that we collected over and above what we are supposed to collect, we will then donate back to the district, whether it's through wellness, or however you want to use, whatever those dollars are, we will make sure that we are made whole in our contracts so that we're not collecting any more than we're supposed to. So that's how we got to the 6.5%, because there was about 1.5% built in. So we went to WCA and said, now we're only a point and a half away of where we need to be, 5%. Can they get there? They still said no, so we said, okay, we're going to go out to the market and we're going to collect competitive information. We received two competitive quotes. One was from Anthem, which came in at 5%, and the other was WEA Trust, Wisconsin Education Association. Anthem was kind of stuck on their 5% number. We didn't feel like it made sense to make a change, just to make a change. And WEA originally came in at 2.7% above current, with a 10.5% second year not to exceed, so the worst-case scenario would be 10.5 points. Well, knowing that we wanted to get closer to zero, we asked them just today if they would get to zero in the first year, but maybe increase our risk on the second year up to 13.5, and they agreed. So that's what they came in at. So I'm proud to say, at this point, if we moved to WEA Trust, the Wisconsin Education Association, we would be back to the same rates that we have today with the exact same plan design that we have today. So the savings from the renewal, what it would have been at 6.5% is, you know, it's not a small chunk of change, it's about $160,000 worth of money that we'd be saving from the proposed renewal to the now flat increase, with staying with WEA. A couple of nice things about WEA Trust, and I understand the district had a WEA Trust many years ago, is that right? They're much more of an insurance company today, they're not the old WEA Trust that it was previous to Act 10. They are much more in line with how other insurance companies operate, but they do have some very cool value-added things that I think employees of the district would appreciate. The first is their telemedicine product. It is a free product to the employees, so there are no copays or charges to use telemedicine, and that goes for both their health telemedicine and their mental telehealth. Mental health providers are at a shortage in the state of Wisconsin, and quite frankly, nationwide. This product would allow anybody on the health plan to use it, to see a provider via either telephone or Skype. To be honest, teenage kids love this, if they need to see a provider, they don't feel like they need to be, you know, their friends aren't going to see them in the parking lot, they're much more comfortable talking to somebody in their own home. It's a really cool product. The other thing that, the other things that WEA has, they will offer gift cards for seeing the correct providers, and when I say correct providers, I mean both in cost and care. So one example is MRIs or other medical screenings. So if I go to Smart Choice MRI, which the closest one, I believe, is in Richfield, right? Becky Bell is there, it's about 600 bucks to get an MRI there. If you go to Agnesian or another medical provider, it's $2,000, $3,000, $4,000. So by going to Smart Choice, WEA is saving some money, the district is saving some money, they will give the employee or their dependents a $100 gift card to use those services. The other one is OSI, Orthopedic Surgery, up in Appleton. If I go and get my shoulder done, my hips, my knees, et cetera, at OSI up in Appleton, I will get a $250 gift card for using those services. So they are incentivizing the employees to make good decisions around their healthcare, which I think is really cool. The last thing I'd like to talk about is their Vitality Program. This is very similar, if you're familiar with Humana's Go365 program, but it's an online wellness portal that's free to the district, it's baked into your premium, that all employees and their dependents will have access to, so it does things like track steps, track sleep, and by doing the right things, I can earn gift cards that I can spend on the online mall, which people love free stuff for doing the right thing, so I can get Fitbits and bikes and all those types of things, just by doing the correct wellness activities. So it would be something for the Wellness Committee to include for those types of things, especially since we are going to lose access to the Agnesian Clinic. Not that employees can't go there, but we're going to lose the WCA benefit that they were providing, and then we're also going to lose that $3,000 wellness grant, so hopefully Vitality will continue to bring wellness up. But other than that, all of the plan designs remain the same as they are today, so we're not increasing duck holes, we're not increasing copays, everything is remaining the same. The only area where an employee might see a difference is what drug tier their drug falls in, so even though the drug copays are remaining the same, if I'm on a tier one drug with WCA, it might move tiers by switching carriers, but the overall plan design as a whole is remaining the same at the same cost, which, we had a zero last year, we had a zero again this year, that's fantastic, I don't get to.
We had five years, I think, pretty, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't get to say that very often, so I'm very happy to deliver what I think is good news this evening. With that, I will turn it over to any questions that you have.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so first, a couple of things with looking this way. We also, as Alex said, because of them also getting the commission, we're going to see a $24,000 savings next year, and we're looking at anywhere between $3,000 to $6,000 on top of that, that we would really like them to put in our wellness programs, which we currently have $3,000, so we'd actually still be able to have the wellness programs plus this vitality on top of that, and that allows us to do different things. We're going to talk about biometric screening, is that worthwhile, because we won't have that paid, but maybe what we do is incentivize, making a relationship with the doctors, there's a lot of things we can do. Another thing, looking at our usage and our claims, our claims, we, I mean, you can't get a zero without doing pretty well. I mean, there's some places we can work and continue to work, but we are still in the mode of looking to do self-insured later on. So if we continue on our journey of, even now, having more incentive to utilize different providers that are less costly and just as high-quality care, if we have more wellness incentives, that people do things in order to earn gift cards or money, whatever that is, that should still allow us to continue to go on our vision of going to self-insured possibly in 2019. So this 13% hike could really be negligible anyways, if that's, if we continued on the path that we're looking at doing. So one question I have for, that I'll have a couple, like, so Alex, would you say WEA Trust? I know that things have changed, you know, it's a new day in the WA, as we have heard. How is their service comparative to the group health trust? Because in essence, we're moving to another trust, instead of a county group health trust, we're going back to Wisconsin Educator Association Trust. How is their service comparable to that? Because we did have problems with United, I know that there was some blip, so what is your experience with other clients or that I know about?
I would say that the group health trust to carry with today, from an employee standpoint, is more flexible than WEA will be. WEA is going to be closer to a United Healthcare, Humana, and Anthem, not all the way there, but closer than where we are today. From an administration standpoint, from Maria and Bonnie's perspective, working with WEA will be a much nicer experience. So it's kind of, there's two sides to every coin. I think the employees, if they remember being with WEA Trust, it's not the old WEA where everything goes, but they're still a very nice carrier.
So if we had, like, one of the problems we had with United is the speed at which a decision was made on service. You see, that is more like group health trust, where they'd get that quicker?
It should be done quicker, obviously, there's exceptions to every rule, but I would expect that type of thing to be solved in a quick manner.
And then as far as the drug card, our drug card, or our, that gets looked at every year anyway, so there could have been changes on our drug plan even if we stayed with the group health.
That's correct. Yep.
As a user, for full disclosure, over the last number of years with the different changes, WA's service for the user end of things was much better than any of that we've had since.
Okay, great.
I mean, the DOBs would arrive 10 days to two weeks after, under there, and they were easy to read, they weren't 12 pages and things like that, so. One question I have, do you know offhand, or do you have what our loss ratio is for this last period?
Great question. I don't remember off the top of my head, I'd be happy to get it to you. We did see significant claims uptick over the summer months. When I got together with Aaron and Maria and Bonnie earlier in the summer, we were clipping along, I want to say it was in the '60s.
Yeah.
It was running really well, and then by the time the renewal came, and June and July specifically hit, those two months alone were about 140%. So we had back-to-back really bad months, which really spooked WCA group health trust, and we specifically had one member with, you know, almost $400,000 in medical claims. So claims did tick up. With the 5% number that we originally thought we had, I thought was a very fair renewal. The fact that they weren't willing to come back down to that spot, and we forced the market, WEA is being aggressive this year, and they're offering us very competitive proposals, so that's kind of my two cents on where the renewal is.
So is that why, probably one of the reasons why you only have two other providers that were interested in quoting it?
Well, that's part of it. The other part of it, I just don't have many options anymore with all the kind of insurance industry coming together and everyone's buying each other up. I only have five or six carriers I can go to. Because we're with WCA, we can't also go to United Healthcare, they're sister companies, so that leaves Humana, which doesn't have a great network in this area. WPS declined to quote Anthem and WEA Trust, so that's kind of, those are my options, and we're lucky enough to get two competitive proposals.
You know, the same thing's a significant, the one thing, you know, coming from the casualty part of the business, and it's probably different, but companies or employers or entities like this who jump every year, every other year, tend to get labeled or have reputation, and that scares away other, you know.
That's part of the reason I didn't want to go out to market this year. We had just moved from United Healthcare to WCA last year, and I didn't want to do that, and we forced our hand, and it worked out. The nice thing about WA is they did go with that not to exceed, so, you know, if self-insure does not work again next year, we at least have something to continue to fall back on, and hopefully we can build a relationship with a carrier.
And that's the 13%?
13%, yeah.
Not to exceed.
Up to, not to exceed, that's the ceiling, not the floor. We certainly wouldn't accept. Up to, not to exceed. That's the ceiling, not the floor. We certainly wouldn't accept a thirteen and a half just to take a thirteen and a half. We're going to look at whether it makes sense or not. But it's nice to have a worst-case scenario next year. I have groups that have gotten twenty, thirty, forty percent renewal increases. It's not uncommon anymore. So that also goes to the fact of, I'm very proud that we've had back-to-back years of zeros. I don't get to deliver that news very often, so.
What did you mean, I just heard you say we're using Agnesian. Is that-
No, no, okay. Yes, I want to be very clear about that, because that's, I probably shouldn't have said it that way. Currently today through WCA, we have access to the Agnesian clinic that Fond du Lac County and Fond du Lac School District use, because they're also WCA members. So by going there, it is at a reduced price, and the employee is free. Is that correct?
And it's one room at the hospital?
It's one room at the main Agnesian hospital. The free part to use that clinic will go away if we switch carriers, because that is a WCA-run clinic. If you are going to Agnesian hospitals or any Agnesian providers, you can continue to do that. The free clinic that we have today is, would go away if we make this change. That's a very good distinction, though. Thank you for asking that question.
Do you have any idea how widely that benefit is used today by our staff?
I don't really. I went one time and it was closed.
It wasn't used very widely. I don't have the exact numbers, but if we had stayed with WCA, we would have definitely pushed that, given that the copay could have gone up another five dollars. So we would have, we would have tried to incentivize that a little bit more, but I don't think it's going to be that.
The journey also, so WCA, after they went to six point five from eight because of the commission that they removed, part of that with WCA then was, we'll get to five, but we're going to add five dollar more to your copay, so it's twenty-five, and then add another hundred dollars to the emergency room, so it's two fifty. So there is design plan changes for them to get down to five.
That's alternate one on your spreadsheet. So when you look at the spreadsheet, I know it's hard to tell, but anything that's bold in here would be changes from our current plan. So what Aaron was just talking about is alternate one. They did increase the costs of copays by five dollars and the emergency room copays by a hundred to two fifty. WEA, all of the in-network plan designs are exactly the same. There are some out-of-network tweaks, but I think that's good for two reasons. One, it's very rare that someone goes out of network. All of the major providers in the state of Wisconsin are going to be in-network. And two, if someone is seeing out of network provider, we want to encourage them to see an in-network provider, so we're getting a better discount and everything that goes with that, so.
I have a couple more questions. The provider part, the Agnesian and, you know, SSM, everybody now they've rolled the D part in, so that for our people, they'll be also in the first.
Yes, all of those providers will be in-network.
The other comment is, you know, again, the money savings makes up for this, I guess, but there's always the inconvenience for the user.
Yeah.
Not so much when you go to the provider the first time, you just give them the new card and things are switched over. Here, it's the drug area, getting new prescriptions, having to have them renewed, and, you know, that. So who is the provider with? We go in a care mark this year, right?
Yeah. So it's, it's through WEA. I don't know who their pharmacy benefit managers, but all of the ID cards are now going to say WEA Trust. And when we do open enrollment, we will discuss how to, if you're on mail order, how do you go about renewing, fill your prescriptions as close to January one as you can, so that if there are any glitches in the system, they have a time to work themselves out. So we have a lot of communication around to hopefully get in front of any of those issues. But you're right, anytime we change, especially around January first, which is insurance busiest time of the year, there probably be, will be a few glitches that will need to be worked out. But it's not unlike what we did last year and two years ago when we moved from WPS.
We learned also that what we'll do is we'll have the ability to have a list of all the drugs that are utilized. And then what we'll be, the biggest part was is people didn't educate themselves. So, and I mean that by there's just a lot of business going on. The biggest problem was the drug ones, like you had said. We, when we went from United to the Group Health Trust, we'd had a more concerted effort to make sure, because there isn't a whole bunch of people that this drug really impacts, but the ones that it doesn't really impacts. So we did a lot better, I think, last time, identifying and doing more of a laser on who those people are, so we could, we didn't rely on them realizing there could be a big change. We, and that's where the Horton Group helps us out a lot, like, hey, here's the comparison of drugs. The people on this should really start having that conversation with their doctors and get over here, or get enough because they know that their transition or how they're going to have to do things is going to be something. We didn't do that with United. We gave out the information, but didn't really kind of get that pinpoint. We did that more with GHT, and we saw a lot more success. So I see that making this decision now, looking at open enrollment, I see that this being a very doable thing to help people make sure that they can maintain their care as they move forward without having that glitch, which that was, that's what probably took up when we went from, went to United. That was the most difficult thing.
Yeah.
And so, I apologize if you already said this and I'm repeating it, but, so the changes are the out-of-pocket, or I'm sorry, out-of-network, yeah, so the out-of-pocket, so it went from fifty-two fifty to six thousand, and ten-five to twelve thousand, and then the twenty to fifty, and the twenty to fifty.
Again, all out of network.
Yeah, out of network.
Yep. So those would be the changes.
So like chiropractic care, all that stuff is the same that we had before?
It should be. We'll have to kind of dive into the details. I just got this. I do apologize. And it got to you late, but I got this at about eleven o'clock this morning. So I haven't dug a lot into the major details, but, you know, with chiropractors specifically, those benefits should remain close to the same. The big difference with chiropractors is who's going to be in on a network. That is one area that we do see quite a bit of difference in the network, just because a lot of the chiropractors are independent shops and those types of things. If chiropractors, if it becomes a big issue, my advice to anybody, free advice, ask the chiropractor what the cash price is. My guess is it's much lower than what they're charging the insurance company. So if you are going to not a network provider, they're not in any network, you could probably save yourself quite a bit of money just by asking what the cash price is as opposed to running through insurance. But we will kind of follow up with chiropractors. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions? What's the downside? The downside is, you know, moving every year, coming back to your point, this would be the third year in a row, or three out of the last four years that we've had a change. You know, administratively, Maria and I, we're just talking about this before the meeting, administratively, there's going to be some hurdles now that we have to kind of overcome. A little bit more work on the front end, but hopefully, the fact that we have sixty days to, more than sixty days to get this moving, we can get ahead of a lot of those glitches on the front end, and hopefully it'll be a nice smooth transition into January first. But I think the positives far outweigh the negatives by moving to WEA Trust.
One thing to that, as I was talking with Alex, is that we, for the first time talking with Maria, also we heard from our representative at the Group Trust that we're in right now. We hadn't heard from them in a while, and I know that they're, they're not, they wish they would have been able to keep us. And when I hear trust, I remember back when we were with Wisconsin Education Association Trust, we were overpaying because we were subsidizing because of the way that our district was doing things. And what it comes down to usage, it comes down to wellness. And those are things that we know we have to focus on. I think we're doing pretty well. And I know that now that we're moving on, the feeling is that we are a good risk for trusts. We have been. I think if we keep on our motion for where we're going, I think we will continue to be. So I think that's one of the reasons WA is very aggressive to try to get us, as by now in Group, I don't think that the county really had any thought that we would go anywhere because they didn't think it could happen. So I'm excited about that. The other thing, we were always looking at a self-insured plan. And the more that we're learning about this, the more that it makes more sense that, like I said again, what we pay versus what we put in for our premiums, that's all it comes down to. So if we continue on the process that we are, continue to work with Alex and the Horton Group team, I don't see why unless, like right now, we were going to go self-insured. If this didn't pan out like it was, we would have got an eight, nine, ten renewal. We would have been talking right now about going self-insured because we think we could have done better than that without having to pay that, the administrative fees are paying less. So I'm very confident with what we have in structure as far as our mindset on insurance, that with WEA Trust, even if they are buying our business for a year, that's a one less year of paying at that premium level. We have a locked-in amount of what the ceiling would be. But if we keep doing what we're capable of doing, learning more and more about the market and how insurance works and what we can do, I feel very confident that we could very well look at going to self-insured next year and maintaining this static or maybe just growth based on what CPI or what, not because we, even if we hit a hundred percent, a hundred percent because of inflation, it would grow. So I feel that this, once, this puts off, to me, this puts off our conversation about self-insurance, just because why wouldn't we if we could be self-insured? And we got, I'm excited, zero for our staff. Same doctors, same stuff. Once again, their increases in pay will not be decreased because of increased healthcare costs unless something happens to them in their lives. And we actually will have more money for wellness to help to drive more and more of usage and for wellness. So that's kind of the journey that I see where I'm pretty excited about. Maria?
I was going to mention that, we've been starting this conversation too. We've been kind of focusing on health insurance, but we haven't had, we haven't moved forward with dental, and we've talked about going self-insured with dental, and that will kind of give us that experience of what it's like on a much, much smaller scale with much less risk as well. So we'll be having that conversation soon.
One of the things to it, you know, eventually, companies won't buy the business anymore by an interim lawyer, doctor, or physician, or they'll think, we're just going to leave the next year, so that, you know, we're not going to get this type of zero increase, potentially.
It's definitely a potential. I will say, just with all of our other groups, shopping every other year is just, it's common now. And insurance companies know that. So they are taking, health insurance nowadays is legalized gambling, right? They're taking a risk that, you know, they're the carrier that's going to, that's going to make it. So I certainly understand your point.
And the other question I have, and Aaron touched on at the beginning with WEA in the past, in that group rating thing where they combined a bunch of districts in the area and then rated everybody the same, even if they were paying more because of having better results actually. So are they now just rating us just on our own, just to confirm?
It's a little bit of both, but that's not unlike any other insurance carrier. So the majority of your rate increase is going to be based on our own utilization. However, and United does this, Anthem does it, Humana does it, they are still a big trust. They're going to look at how the group as a whole is running. So if we're having a great year, but the rest of WEA is running poorly, we're going to feel that. Now, is it going to be drastic? Probably not, but you are going to feel it. Again, United is the same thing. Anthem does it, Humana does it. They're looking at their block of business and how it's running, and they need to make sure they're hitting their profit margins. So WEA is the same in that way. And that's what insurance is for, right? They're looking at a whole pool of big bodies and hoping that they can properly calculate that risk.
But the big difference now is that we will know our utilization, where back then, they wouldn't give us that information.
Yeah. We will have, we will have much greater access to data than we did probably last time we were with WEA. So we'll get loss ratio reports, high-cost claim information, those types of things, so.
And what with the Group Health Trust, we knew coming in that even if we killed it and we were at like seventy percent usage, we would, we wouldn't see a big drop. We should get around, you know, zero or maybe a little less. We knew that. We also knew if we had a bad year, we should get hit as hard. So the nice thing now is going into a trust, we're going in with our eyes wide open. We understand it. But the one thing that we have, and that's what I, what I really appreciate and love about the employees of this district, is we have the idea and the mindset of usage and wellness. That's all it comes down to. The healthier you are, the less your insurance costs are, the better you use it, the less it costs the plan. And that, in the back, we are able, and as we grow larger, spreads out risk. As we continue to get more and more into wellness and usage, we have that self-insure. We never had that before. So it comes down to the buying the business. Now it's legitimate. If we're good, if we're a good risk, we can go on our own. We can figure it out. So I really see the WEA Trust, and I saw the Group Healthcare, or the GHT, are, I think I'm saying this right here, is that no insurance company wastes, loses money. You know, they don't. They, that just doesn't happen. It's just that we are in a really prime place because of our staff and how we've structured our insurance. And I'm pretty proud of that. That didn't just happen overnight. That was a calculated thing we've been working on for over a decade. And now we get to reap the benefits of that.
I have one more question. So, okay, WCA and the alternate, on the very bottom, HRA and biometrics included, and then we get net of commission to use. I don't know what that means.
Sure. So for WCA, where it says HRA and biometrics included, they pay for those costs for the health risk assessments and the biometric screening. WEA will likely not do that. Now, I haven't asked them, so I can't wait to ask.
Okay, so then, okay, so if they don't do that, and let's say, you know, somebody last year had a BIA of thirty, and now this year it's twenty-five, which is awesome. So if fifty percent of the people did that, which include, which portrays health versus not, what are they basing health on? Are they just basing it on usage of the insurance? Or do you know what I'm asking?
No, sorry.
They don't pay, theirs is all usage. I know what you're saying. So what we had, we had a very low turnout for our, how many people went to our biometric screen?
Twenty-something.
Twenty, because it wasn't incentivized, we didn't change any rates. So that trend, we don't know. The idea, though, is like where Alex has net commissions?
Yeah.
That's at three to six thousand dollars. So we're still going to have money that we're getting from the Horton Group. And what, and we've talked about biometric screen, like how worthwhile is it? Many times I'll go, and I know that before I've gone and got my drug, blood drawn there, and then I go to my doctor, he says, we want you to have ours with these more in-depth tests. So what we're going to, what we've been talking about is, how can we really do something so we have wellness and really incentivize people to make a relationship with the doctor and have a yearly checkup that they get? Now, that's a claim, but it won't cost the person money. And on top of that, I bet if we did a survey, I bet there's a pretty strong percentage of people who don't have a doctor. So if we can incentivize that and get those people to not just get a list of what their biometric screening debt is, and actually have that conversation, have that information, then have a physician in that relationship, both of that could do even better. So, but that, we need to do a lot better with that. The insurance companies from, I think what you're asking is, they don't, their wellness stuff, they don't base anything on that. They base their claims.
Yeah, our rates increase were not based on the biometric screening debt. It's based on the other. The net of commission, just to slightly clarify what Aaron said, so it goes back to what I talked about with how brokers like myself generally get paid. One way is commission. So you, as a district, wouldn't write us a check. It would just come directly from the insurance carrier. It's usually a point, when I say a point, one to two, three percent, somewhere in there. We, because we have a separate fee agreement, where Fond du Lac is paying us directly, there are no commissions in those rates. So it's usually one or the other. That's what net of commission is.
And that's the district, just like we did with our bidding for the referendum. When we went with the Horton Group, that was one of the key things that, that the Horton Group brought us, that it wasn't commission-based. They work for us. They don't work for anybody else. So this is information. We'll go through the rest. I just want Alex getting his guy to drive back to Milwaukee. If you feel comfortable, we can make a motion and discuss this to have WEA Trust become our carrier based on the plan that's presented. There's still some more unpacking. Or what we can do is, you can, we can say to Alex, hey, go back, find out all this different things, really dig into that, and then I can call you in for a quick, you know, five, ten-minute meeting if there's any, ideally, nothing would come up. And we could say, it is what we is. Maybe it is what we is. It is what it is. Or maybe we even found some other things that are even better. Or if there is something that's clear, we could say, hold on a second.
But at this point, it will only get better. I mean, this, what you presented is-
I mean, the, what I presented is pretty much what it is, right? The main differences are some of those nuanced type things like chiropractors. It's actually the only thing off the top of my head I can think of. I mean, all of the major providers are in the network. I'm just trying to think of any normal-
Drug carters have been reevaluated anyways.
Yeah, so that the drug formulary might change. But, I mean, even if the chiropractor thing, if there's a slight tweak to that, I don't know if that's going to sway our opinion over five percent. I don't see that. So I don't know if it would influence our decision. I mean, really, at this point, it's just we need to understand it a little bit better so we communicate to employees correctly. But not much is going to change from what's on the sheet.
The telemedicine is new to the program, or is it-
So, telemedicine, we currently have through WCA, the mental health piece would be new, and also the- And also the co-pays would be, I think it's ten dollars, say, if I'm wrong on that, but it's guaranteed.
You have to pay it before you use it.
Yeah, it's guaranteed zero dollars with WEA. So it's a free product for employees to utilize, which is awesome. I really think that is the way of the future. And I think that helps offset losing the ability to use the Fanta County slash school district clinic down, down there. So employees lose access to that, but they get, I think, a better benefit telephonically or virtually. And it extends to mental health, which is great.
One thing you have said, so vitality, is that just for the spouse or for all dependents?
It's going to be only for employees and their spouses.
Okay.
Adult dependents and children cannot use the program due to federal law. So, but employees and their spouses will have access to that program and the rewards associated with it.
All right, any other questions about Alex? Any of the administrative TV guys heard this kind of for the first time, your users? Any questions? Mary?
Sounds cool.
Because we can utilize you guys to help us spread the message. Kind of quick, kind of like, hey!
This is happening quickly. This proposal's on eleven today.
But so, I mean, we're looking at some substantial savings. And the cool thing is, it's also passed on to the employee. An increase in insurance would have cost all of our employees more. So this saves money that way, plan design, they're the same. I think that could be a huge win-win.
I think the key is the savings, you know, we're dealing with taxpayers' money that are responsible for. We're a private business and in order, once, say, I wanna keep the same and I'll kick in, you know, the increase or whatever, that's, that's different. But we, we, you know, the public's money that we gotta think about. And that's quite substantial, about one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand percent difference.
Yeah, from the renewal to a new plan.
All right, we have to do that in the, in the new business section.
Yes, I just want to put it up here. I didn't know WEA existed right now, or when I put this together. This was just one of those that it could happen, because we had conversations all last week, later in the week. And then every time we heard Alex called, it's like, let's run to Maria's room. This is really what it kind of came down to for the past couple days, so.
Maria, was this one-hundred-and-sixty K or that eight percent, was that factored into the deficit that we currently have?
I had a five percent renewal.
Five percent.
And, yep, yep. So this will be additional saving.
Okay.
As well as the twenty-four thousand that we won't be paying to Horton Group.
Right.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, thank you. Appreciate your time. Stay safe, Alex.
Well, let me know.
Oh, good. Thanks for getting some more.
Thank you.
All right, the rest, we can go by relatively quick. I'm just gonna pass this out. Nothing's happening here. This is Karen Pos's first attempt to throw some things together. We will have a calendar presentation in November, but it's the same stuff I gave you yesterday. But just kind of look at where the dates go. Kind of going back to status quo before, you can see this would be what the family calendar is, so it's not per se what staff is. But just kind of use those numbers on the side, that's the number of school days. Currently, our contract for teachers is a hundred and seventy, or students, a hundred and seventy-seven, we don't contract, but a hundred and seventy-seven school days, so that adds up. Really, the nuance here is that, that April spring break, that's the tenth is Good Friday. So that's why it's moved from then to March to April to save a date of vacation. We'd still get out the first week of June on the fourth. The fifth could be a makeup day along with the twenty-eighth of February. We still have the seventeenth, which is at Cease of Six in service, plus we'd have the seventeenth and the twenty-fifth for in-service days. Christmas is very nice, no need to come back, come on school just on the twenty-third. So that could be something. So I just wanted to send this out there. None of this is official or anything, but just, anybody who has fun with calendars and likes to do stuff, dig on in. So just wanted to throw that out there. Ideally, I think people like to start early. But right now, until we have somebody that does some non-violent protesting, and starts before that, says take away my aid, we're gonna probably stay the status quo for right now. But that could all change too, depending on governors' race elections, pressures, things like that. So this is it right there. Really, nothing, the, where conferences would be would change possibly, a lot of different things. So this is just, I wanna throw this out, we're working on it. With the construction conversation, we will be able to start right after Labor Day, so that's cool. And then summer school, have a conversation. We're really thinking about staying with a three-week summer school, and maybe go all day, but there'd be a morning, AM and a PM, and maybe doing that in June, and freeing up July and August. We're working on different things, see how that all works, but get more opportunities for kids than we had before, probably summer school, FLC, early childhood through fifth grade, and then the middle school, high school, up at the high school for summer school. So more to come on that. Our man Mike, the summer school guru's gonna be, start kicking around ideas and maybe work.
I mean, I just, like, with graduation, everything's not on the way.
Yep.
Starts after we do seven months.
There we go. All right, so FYI, food for thought on that. All right, lunch service questions? I sent you information. We met with Blair, the lady that presented. Julie came in and also shared. It, we're killing, we're doing a really great job. A lot of the ideas and mindset of people out there were shaming, number one, I don't know if they understand the lengths at which the food service, and even getting into school and principals, that really worked to try to get kids lunch. We made a couple tweaks, but overall, the question wasn't, why don't you just get rid of your policy? We can have the free and reduced federal group of policy unless we, or program unless we have a policy. We also have to increase our regular lunch because we get reimbursed at a higher rate. We're probably gonna bring that up ten cents again coming next fall. So there's so many different structures that we have to do. So I think that was a great learning opportunity. And then when it was found out, we went and looked at the data. We're talking a handful of kids really ever get that cracker lunch, which is now gonna be a peanut butter or a cheese sandwich, which is gonna be in a bag, not on a tray. So that really isn't as big of an issue as what people know or what people think. And I think Blair left feeling very good about that.
Yeah.
Ironically, we had another person emailing right after Blair left, hey, what do you think about the lithium tech questions again about lunches and the cracker thing? So we, Maria did a very nice job responding back, haven't heard anything back since. So I think that was good. But just want to report and circle back, you guys have that information if you have any questions. I'm, I'm really proud of our school, and we really care and do whatever we can to help feed kids. And there's, every year, community members come in and even up with us. So I was really proud of how Julie and Maria and Blair, we actually, like I said, there's some things that even got better just by that listening session. So, all right, FLC report card evolution. Carrie, do you want to kind of explain where you're at with there and just kind of...
Sure. Okay, so we have, our report card has been something that we've been looking at for the last few years, and we've waited for, we've, we've talked about revising, but we've kind of waited till the priority standards were in play. And even as we, we looked at that, there's a lot of things that, it's just, I don't know if you've seen the report card, but like even the first grade report card is three pages long when it's printed. It's just very cumbersome. And parents oftentimes tell us that they don't really understand the report card, or it's not really meaningful, it's in a lot of educator language rather than parent-friendly language. So one of the things that we did last year, a group of teachers created a conference summary sheet, which Aaron is pulling up behind you, which, so we used something similar to this last year that we shared out at conferences. Typically, our conferences are when we share the report cards. And again, we either run out of time or parents just don't understand, so we tried to simplify it last year with something like this. We start out the conference with the strengths. We talk about student progress in specific assessments that we've done to that point in the school year, talk about where they are in their reading continuum, and explain that a bit, which is one of the assessments. And parents actually said they found that to be more meaningful and more helpful and were just parent-friendly than some of the report cards. And some parents have said, I don't even look at the kids' report cards, they don't even understand. So with that being said, we just started talking about, how do we make our communication to parents more meaningful for the elementary level, because it's a lot different than when you're in middle school, high school, and you have, you have grades and things. So we were talking about, we like sharing out this level of information at conferences, and we have conferences in November and February. And right now, the report cards don't always align with those conference times. So we felt that it would be more meaningful if the board would agree in the sense that we would communicate out every two months with it alternating between twice a year sending out and having the face-to-face conferences with families like we do, but reporting it up through that format. And then at the semester and end of year, do a report card that's been modified to reflect the standards, but has more of the traditional reporting, but a combination of the academic piece, but also more of that narrative format that seems to be more suited for elementary. Because typically, that's, you know, the parents are as concerned as, they wanna know where, how their child is reading, they wanna know if their child's progressing, but they also wanna know that social emotional development. And there's really nowhere in our report card to capture that. So we really wanted to tweak it and give parents information that they've been asking for. So our proposal, which, do you want me to share that right now, Aaron? Is that coming up later?
Oh, this right here?
Okay, yes. So would be to do the face-to-face supplement, the conference supplement in November when we do the parent visits. We have really good attendance at our parent conferences. And for those parents that aren't able to make the two nights that we schedule, we do still follow up and hold face-to-face meetings with them on alternate nights. Parents do sign up at back-to-school night typically, so they know months ahead of time when that conference time will be. But almost always, we have for almost every class, a hundred percent attendance. So we feel like that's a really good opportunity for us to get that information to them. And then we would look at, rather than sending a report card home November ninth, which is right now when our trimester would end, we would send home, we'd adjust those dates and send home our report card in January. And one of the benefits to that besides parent communication being simplified, is we have a new set of data at that point. We will have just finished our Winter Star assessments and our Winter Fanta Sinfinale reading assessments. So again, it's a really good time to give parents that timely information and, and get that out in that report card. We'd wanna follow up for our February conferences, again, with that written format of face-to-face supplemented by the summary sheet and then our report card with the woman name. So again, that report, the reporting or that communication about the child's progress is still every two months. It just looks different during those non-semester times.
And the one thing is, I talked with Carrie Jo, inquiring about what parents want, what that's what the team that's looking at this is doing. So I think that's a critical part. Sort of, that's what creates all the reporting. How does it communicate what they're learning and where they are on their journey? But another thing that this continues to do is, I think, not only continues to do, but might even make it better, is it still has that paper trail and that records portion, because we know our kids aren't all gonna stay here. Some will go somewhere else, but you can still very much articulate and show where they're at as far as what their standards are. But even having those differentiated, where you have more of a narrative on those other progress ones, those I think will be very useful too for other parent or other teachers and parents looking at.
When we have students that transfer in from other districts, and we try to make sense of whether it's their IP or their report card or all the paperwork that comes in their cumulative folder, it's like, ooh, you know, some of it's really straightforward and some of it's not. And so nine times out of ten, we get the most information when we either talk to the parent or talk to the previous school. And again, if, if we are able to share the child's progress in a narrative format where we're, it's more conversational but in writing, it just, it's, we think it'll be more meaningful, not only for the families, but also for the schools if our students do transfer out as well. We did intend to have some parent input if we move forward with a different layout for that report card, again, showing them what we have. For those that aren't familiar with it, maybe our kindergarten families that are now first grade families, we want them to see, it looks very different between what kindergarten does and what first or fifth grade look like. And then what we would also like to do is, in addition to having the report card that goes in their cumulative folder, we would put the, we added the May or end-of-year column on that conversation page, even though we don't have conversations with families, we still wanted to have that in there. We'd send it home with families along with the report card. And then we also want to upload that to EduClima, which is our district data warehouse, so that we can pull that up and see beginning, middle, and end of year really quickly in a snapshot for that child in one place is another, another piece of evidence for how that student was learning.
In your, the strengths, is there like criteria of, I mean, you're not just going, oh yeah, they're doing wonderful. I mean, there's certain things that they're kind of like checking off.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So we have, like, for the teachers at a grade level, developed a checklist of, and not just thinking about like academics. So again, thinking about that whole child of just, here are some things that you could really highlight. And sometimes, like, it's similar to with an IP. We always wanna start a student's IP with strengths about their child, because the rest of that meeting tends to talk about the child's deficits. And we really, really, for conferences, always wanna start out with, no matter who that child is, every child has a strength. And that's why we didn't say like, strength in math, strength in reading, strength in anything. We're looking for any strengths that they have, and then being able to have that up and then, but again, a guide and checklist behind the scenes for teachers to kind of work through. And definitely staying away at this point on this conference sheet from saying, you're a four, you're a three, you're a two, you're a one, or you're a basic, you're below, but we, we're trying to get away from, we think you're this level, it's just, here's, here's this objective information about your child, the observational and anecdotal, that again, tends to be more self-fulfilling for the kids at this age, rather than all of a sudden being pigeonholed into, I'm advanced or I'm not advanced, and thinking that for the rest of their schooling.
And parents would still continue to be able to come in for face-to-face when necessarily when they want.
Always.
Like they do now if they have an issue.
Yeah, and we do, I don't know if you know this, but we do, which is a little bit of a tangent, but we do have all of our teachers go out in the morning for ten minutes before the bell rings. And all of our teachers go out at the end of the day, and they stay out for about ten, fifteen minutes after the bell rings. So for parents that do pick up or drop off, there's a lot more face-to-face time than, and we did that last year too, but last year it wasn't every teacher was three, but now every classroom teacher is out there every single day for those families that do that drop off and pick up. So it's not intended to be conference time, but it's always, it's, even if a parent's like, hey, I need to talk to you about, can we set up some time? Like, there is a lot more access, even though they're not physically in the building for safety reasons, they have a lot more access to the teachers than they've ever had before. So.
That's great. And there is no board action on this, just, what I told Carrie Jo, we've never had board action on report cards or anything. We've got grading scales more at the high school, middle school. But this is more, if anybody has a, an issue with it, I wanna make sure that your input, as being parents and board members, that this doesn't go on this plan, to make sure that your, your concerns are taken care of before Carrie Jo and the team would roll it off.
I love, just in, just because of my child, but I love the fact that you're not going to put a label, like, you know, not advanced, advanced, you know, whatever, because it does stick with them.
Yeah.
Even though you don't necessarily say it to them, they know. And, and, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's great.
Thanks. And that's something, like, even as we're talking about report cards, we're like, oh, how do we, you know, that's what we still have to try and navigate, because there are families, some families that absolutely want that, and others are like, no, don't need it, just wanna know, how is my child doing? And what are we doing as a system to make sure that they're, they're moving forward? So things like the continuum that's on the bottom for the Fanta Sinfinale, we even debated, it's like, oh, do we, you know, like, how far do we go? Because we don't want somebody to think that they're, let's say there's a child who's a level G in reading, which is, you know, towards the end of first grade, and let's say they're a third grader. You know, I don't want a family going home going like my child's reading at first grade level. But at the same time, the reality is, that's where they are. So we don't wanna focus on the level as much as we wanna focus on, so here's what we're doing, here's what we're going to do to move your child to close that gap. And we can talk about a specific action plan for that child.
For that child.
That's, that's what we wanna focus on. We don't wanna focus on the level or the proficiency. I mean, we really, we wanna talk to you about how, or to parents about, how are we going to move that child and close that gap, if that gap exists. And on the flip side, if they're a level K, which is second grade, and they're in first grade, we also wanna talk about how are we gonna continue to challenge and stretch that child, and what does that look like?
All right, very cool. And then as you start developing that report card and stuff, bring that data and information.
Mm-hmm. And I would anticipate another update in November.
All right, share information on, so we have two physicians, or two healthcare providers, Dr. Russell Frederickson and Rebecca Carpenter. They're with, excuse me, Magnesia, Bridget reached out to them. And we're supposed to have healthcare providers that help and work that are our advocates, so they are. They're our advocates. So we have them, it's a non-paid position, but if Bridget or as we go forward with our update wellness plans, things like that, those are our, our professionals that would say they represent the school to start like in the healthcare field.
And that doesn't change, or any kind of a chance to change, right?
Nope, nope, that's just who they are. I don't, I don't know them, but Bridget says they're excellent people. I don't know, does anybody know them? Are they nice people?
Uh, Dr. Frederickson's my doctor, he's amazing. I really appreciate him.
I have a personal friend, Dr. Bird, so.
Cool. All right, so if you see him, say, hey, and I had, I told Bridget to get him some T-shirts. He should have those. So if you see him out... So if you see him out there, tell him thanks for being our, our representative and healthcare and our advocate, so. We have that now, so we have go-to so as a board, if you hear anything, you have concerns, Bridget will work with them, we'll make sure we bring them in to keep them up to speed on things, so. Just FYI, very proud of Bridget and her team. We are better health-wise now as far as what we're doing and how we're organizing before. We have our issues, don't get me wrong, we're working through those things, but I'm very proud of, of what we're doing to meet the whole child's needs, not just academically, you know, if they're not well, we can't really move that button, so. Charter school update, I will, they, they're, the charter school group is meeting to get their board of directors, that's going to be happening relatively soon. Uh, Dr. Dahl, Karen Bartelt, Meg Putty, and Beth Artis, they're kind of the lead group, they will start to do updates every board meeting starting in November. They're going to reach out to the administrative team and our staff. After November, we're going to see Karen and Beth, and they're going to talk to the guys they want to, see if they can meet with your staff, if Dr. Dahl can come in and say, this is what the program is, this is what the Trafford Center isn't, or the Trafford Way, excuse me, the Trafford Center's different than the Trafford Way. The Trafford Way is a charter school, the Trafford Center's the Agnesian Clinic that works, uh, that's named after Dr. Trafford, so. So there's a lot of positive things. Right now, I think there's a lot of unknowns, which causes the anxiety, but I'm really excited for that. They couldn't really share anything, because they didn't really have a whole bunch yet, but they're getting there, so I'm excited about that. We are the authorizers, the school board, the district is, so we really, what the authorizing thing is, we're going to make a charter contract that's got like, what, 17 things that say, you get more flexibility, but you're going to be held accountable for this stuff, and if you don't, then we'll take our authorization away. If you do, really cool. And then they are also considered an instrumentality of our district, which means all of their teachers, all of what they do has to be okayed through us. Now, we'll give them leeway, like if they're going to hire a teacher, we should probably let them be part of that process, but the board will inherently hire, you will see, hire this teacher as a teacher at the Trafford Way Charter School. So we will still hold all those positions, they are our school, but it's a different company that's coming in to add, get in that contract. So it's pretty interesting, I've learned a lot about charters. The way we're doing our charter is a little bit different, I think, than some other districts. Some districts, their charter's really bringing a lot of revenue that then they can utilize in many different areas, be it technology or something else. Also, there's charter schools that, if you, like in Minnesota, if you're above X in special education, we've already had groups, advocacy groups, this is not a special education autism school, it's not that, this isn't like, uh, X-Men for just really gifted out there students either, it's for students who feel that this talent, individualized education would work best for them. Now, that might cater to some more than others, but in some, some states, the more that you have of, of special education IPs, you actually get paid more. Our goal is to say that this school, their goal is, is this is for anybody who thinks this would work for them, and we're going to make sure that they stay true to that mantra, that this is just another opportunity for kids that's different, that normally isn't done within their constraints, but they're going to provide that, so. Pretty exciting.
Rough, rough timeline is?
They'll start next fall. So what will happen is, is they, starting in November, they'll have more and more of their ideas, they're probably going to reach out to administration and staff for curriculum help, kind of develop different things, what that looks like. Then they will start to get information out, the parents, to the community, hey, this is what it looks like in January, then probably in February, March, they're going to look, we're going to probably do like a who wants to go? So they sign up for who wants to go, it's open to the school district first, so, and I think we're going to cap that 40. They will get provisional, okay to go there, if they're open enrollment, as long as they get accepted as open enrollment, because their open enrollment period doesn't end until the end of April. So there's a lot of nuances, but the idea is that they're going to have a pretty good idea of what this school looks like and what it would be. So as a parent, you'd be like, you know what, I want my child to go to this charter school. Then what will happen is, is they'll go more and more information about it, then what we'll do is after open enrollment, if there's any spaces open, solidify that. If there isn't, then there's no open enrollment schools in there, and then the ideas start in the fall. We will then work on staffing, and staffing could be, we could hire a whole new teacher from there. We could have some of our aides and our teachers here, do some time there and in our district, so there's a lot of nuances, but they'll have more of an idea of the timeline is, start looking to get it more solidified of what this is. Mail that three second, that 30 seconds, that three minute, overall what this is. There's one of the people, Rick Kohlstad, I don't know if you guys know his, WISNET, amazing guy, he's actually developed a webpage, he's going to be on their board. They've got some people from Excel Engineering that are on their board, they've got a lot of different, they're, it's, it should be, I'm really excited to see how this pans out, brings more resources to our district through many different ways. Not money-wise, but people's help, so that's the timeline. The kids will start to be organized, and whoever wants to be part of it from like January through eight, March, finalize those rosters, and then rock and roll.
You said there's a cap of 40, is there a minimum? I mean, are they going to run it with two kids or five kids?
No idea. There won't be, I can, I can tell you that. I already know of a lot of families that, if you just take students that currently are on the spectrum, that maybe, you know, more Asperger's towards one end, that are really focused on a talent, they're really good, there's this one, there's this amazing kid who, you, he's like, he's, I think he's five years old, going to be six, the guy knows everything about the solar system, I mean, everything, I mean, everything. I will put him up against all of you collectively, everything. So the whole idea is that student, if he's in a regular classroom, he goes to different types of classes and moves around. And at the Trafford Way, his knowledge of solar system, his passion for solar system is what then will have, how can we create a program where reading and math and science and social studies, all the different things that this child has to do in order to do and pass his assessments, are worked into solar systems, are worked into that passion. There's kids that like, I know a kid named Reese, guy loves fans, an amazing guy, he's a smart guy, some people might know this kid named Reese. How can you make a curriculum around fans? That then that talent is that, because a lot of times students, when they transition away, they have a huge talent, now you have to go somewhere elsewhere, now it's a shutdown to try to figure it out. Now, let's say another kid loves culinary arts and farming, and they're not, they don't have an IP and they're regular ed, all of a sudden, they go into the school and they start to develop programs and things around farming and culinary arts, and they learn everything through that lens. So that's what the school's all about, it just happens to lend its way to possibly students on what maybe different lenses have learned. So that, that's what it really is, it's about educating a kid through their talents and their passions and their strengths.
So will we have to, or not have to, but will we be replacing their current positions, like Beth Artis, for example, as she, or will it kind of meld together with what they're doing now?
I highly doubt Beth and Karen are going to be full-time teachers there anyways, because Beth is a speech and language teacher, and we're not going to have, I mean, she's still, she might serve some people there, and she'll serve some of the district. Karen Bartelt, all of her services aren't going to be needed in that building, there will be some that she'll do. Neither one of them are the curriculum drivers, so, you know, we have to look at who's going to develop, what do these classes look like, what does this process look like? So they're working through that, Tiffany Torres is helping to develop a little bit, Tim Williams, he's a teacher at Bot Lake, he's not going to come over, he's happy where he's at, but he's going to pump in information and ideas about what this curriculum looks like, how do we develop the structure of programs to meet all of these standards, but through their talents? And that's kind of, but that's what this whole thing, so like, I gave that example at the facilities meeting, you've got a kid who's in the program and really understands code, and maybe that's their forte, and that's what they go. We might have at Kurt's class, people who want to make an app, all of a sudden, that kid works with those kids to make that app. So they, they come in, you know, and then the, you know, they're still going to be utilizing gyms and playgrounds and all these different things, so there's, there's a lot of weaving together. The idea is that as this goes, the charter and the regular, kind of, they, they help each other out. So we really plan that strength and organize it that way, so it should be, as it starts to come, I'm really glad that they're really putting the thought process in, so they first share that it's a really good, well-thought-out idea. The flip side is, since there really isn't a whole bunch out there, people are kind of nervous what's that look like. Staffing-wise, we'll see how many kids sign up, we'll see how many they need, and then just like we do anything else, that will be allocated based on what the needs are. They're probably going to need more staffing per ratio, but they should also bring in more revenue too, so we'll see. And then they'll, they'll raise money, a lot of their, so their, their program, they can hire people with private money too, if they have that money. So it's pretty interesting, it should be cool, I'm excited for them to share, and I think as they do that, it's going to be, I think the, the knowing will kind of quell some of the anxieties. If I had a school like that, I would have been way ahead of fantasy sports, it's all I do. I used to like keep track of everything, remember Roto? You guys remember that? I just loved all the numbers and stuff like that, I would be sitting here, they probably have a movie made up of how I invented fantasy football in bad, but it didn't happen, but maybe it will. All right, so you can see policy updates, still work, Kevin knows they'll get that. 19, 20 calendar, staff compensation, we had a meeting, we're going to keep meeting on that, nothing really to report there. Matt will be here for our fall athletics summary, we got Diego Sam, he's going to state.
Yep, second degree general.
Yep, we had two girls make all-conference honor, we'll mention Jordan Stepbacher and Ashley Now. Ed Schreiber, Ed's coming back, we're going to have consistency at the volleyball position, and it's looking like we're going to start to have our trajectory go. Football, 22 to 30 something on Friday, and that was the varsity team of Laconia. Varsity is, our middle school, I think, outscored their opponents 200 and something to 30, they went undefeated, we had success at JV2 and JV, so that's looking good. Our fall sports, the boys doubled back-to-back cross-country champions. Boy soccer did really well, it's just that they had to play Brookfield, but they played the whole game, only nine, nine enough and 27 saves, it had, so, looking good, so. And then just a, a heads up, Peter Pan, make sure you get to that, look for some flying, Dave Smith up in the air, they got that, it's pretty incredible, Pete probably seen a little bit back there, it's pretty cool. Incubator EDU October 30th, that's included at the back of your packet. We, the people that do incubator EDU in Chicago are actually coming up here, and this is where people are coming to meet, to see stuff, so it's, I'm pretty, I'm very proud of Kurt, what he's done, so that'll be kind of fun. Do you guys have anything that you want to share?
So I, I do, a couple. We have a time capsule opportunity at Friendship, it's not a very big container, but it's an 11 by, 23 by 2, so we have until November 2nd to fill it with things that we would want to put in the time capsule.
It'll be behind a number plate, like they'll say 2018 or 19, it'll be behind that.
So before they set that, so we just wanted to make sure you were aware, if there were certain things that you wanted us to include in that, let me know or let Erin know, and we'll make sure that it gets in there, but we're starting to brainstorm at Friendship of what kinds of things we might want to put in there.
What have you thought of so far?
Just, well, there's, there's some things that we're trying to decide if it's going to go in the time capsule, otherwise we're also doing a tour of meaning when you come in the building of just different artifacts from the history of Friendship, and so I think we're just trying to figure out what goes there, but we wanted to definitely put in things like pop culture things that kind of were more popular right now and.
Current things, right?
Yeah, but it could be, yeah, so they know what 2018 looked like, so.
So if you guys want something in there, write something or whatever, I can print it off and put it in there for you, so if you wanted to like put something in, whatever, just kind of, is there a planned opening date?
No, that was one of the questions we had today at our staff meeting, is probably sometime after we're all gone, because I can't imagine cracking it open in like 10 years. No, I don't know, and that was one of the wonders we had too, is how far does it go before, before it's opened, but I don't know that we've gotten that far, so.
They can put on that too. So just like, if you guys got anything?
Even if it's a note to the future, or something like that, so just know that you can be part of that, and we just need it by November 2nd. The other thing I did want to mention is, we are, even today, I go outside after school, and now the snow, so there were fences up before, and then it was just the snow fence to protect the turf, and now like all fencing is down between the blacktop, where we have parents pick up, and then the playground. And so after school, the expectation before and after school is that it's parent pickup on the blacktop, you go home, you leave. So today, again, kids are flying around on the playground unsupervised, like, sorry guys, playground's closed, and parents are just, some parents aren't happy about it, so I don't know if you guys have heard anything, but just if you wanted to know kind of that rationale of what we're telling parents, it's a couple of different things. First of all, kids unsupervised on playground, like they'll say, I see my mom, and they take off and they're on the playground, but we don't know if they really see their mom and dad or not. So we've been this year saying, line up on the blacktop, your parents go home, the parking, or the, the playground is closed. After school, we have our E3 program, so again, we just, we want to use it for our programming for school, so we just, that's the reason or the rationale of why it's not open, we're not trying to take away somebody's opportunity to play in the playground, we've talked about why we wanted it open Saturday and Sunday, they can have it from 8 to 8, there's no school programming going on, it just helps us get everybody cleared off of school property in a safe manner. And a lot of our teachers still do have after-school meetings, so it allows us to get the teachers back into the building by 3:45. So those are the reasons of why, it's not, we're not trying to deny anybody the opportunity to play, but we want a safe dismissal, we want our teachers able to get back into the building, and then we want our after-school program to be able to use it and know that we're supervising the kids that are in that program and not, not having people on or off that, that don't, that we don't know who they are.
I just thought of something, this one, do we want, we might want to think about hiring somebody that is a playground supervisor after hours, and then we could maybe do a fund-aid on that. But just, I just thought about that, just remind me of that, I don't know if that fits all of our criteria, but we could figure, I'm not sure, we'll talk about.
No, and our target time was, the intent was that weeknights, it was going to be open from 6 to 8, because it would be lit, and our after-school program ends at 5:30, so it would give us time again to clear that off, make sure parents are home, but without the lights, we've just not opened it during the weeknights. And then it's been the 8 to 8, and then I don't know if the plan, just even for unlocking the gates, that's kind of a partnership with the village, so I know that's been another thing that sometimes I'm leaving at, you know, 6:30, and parents are like, Harvey, the playground's not open, and I'm like, okay, so I typically unlock it, and I'm like, do a couple zips on the zip line, and then I'll lock it up, or whatever, but I try to explain some, you know, and they're very, the people that have been there on site have been very understanding, but that's been the other piece, is just the 6 to 8 logistics of school nights, it's like who unlocks it, who locks it back up, you know, that's just something we're trying to work through yet, so we're just trying to, just to give you the background of, you know, where some of those things might be coming from, it's, again, we're not trying to not have people do it, but when school, before and after school, we do have our E3 program, and we just, we want to make sure that we're keeping those kids safe. And when it's been open in the past, our old playground before school started, we had tons, and that was our old playground, but we still had tons of issues with kids, either injuries or fights or, I mean, arguments, you know, that kind of fight, but squabbles over force, where they would come in and they'd be all riled up and ramped up, with us not having the playground at the start of the year and just starting with blacktop only, our morning transitions are so much more efficient, kids are not jacked up like they were before, I mean, they're, it's, it's a night and day difference, and then the teacher's like, let's just keep doing this, this is working really well for our kids. And then the after-school, it's the same kind of thing, we're just, we're out and efficient, and the buses get out safely, parents get out safely, it's working out really well, and it was an unintended benefit to us, but that's, that's been working out really well. So again, that's, that's a trade-off, but it works out, but I think the, the pros are outweighing the cons.
Adam, would you mind just give a really quick update of process of the report cards and when they can anticipate seeing them?
Sure, the DPI report cards, they came out in a secure release, so we've seen all this as a mint team, and that data embargoed until the public release, which is November 13th.
You're not even, well, I can't, it says don't tell board members here.
Yep, yeah, we wouldn't bring it to, this is obviously a public meeting, we wouldn't be able to share those here, but, so we have done, there were some errors that we found for some just demographics and graduation numbers, so we can submit it to DPI, that information, get that corrected, so there'll be a re-release, I think on November 8th, we might be able to see our corrections before that, but again, in the public release is November 13th, I want to say is the date for that, so mid-November.
What I'm going to do too is, we're going to have an option, probably, I would say January, February sometime, where I'd like you guys come, and we had a nice, or a nice where I'd like you guys come, and we had a nice, or a nice meeting today with Adam, that explained how those are measured and why. We really think that the report card is a valuable piece that we can utilize to help us monitor where we are in progress. It's gonna be something that Ted Knightz gives C S six, Adam, myself, and three develop these A P Is, key performance indexes, or indicators, excuse me, that are tied into literacy and math and graduation and behavior. So it's all gonna seamlessly come together, and I'm excited about that. But just to give you a heads up, we're excited, very thankful for Adam and the team for getting that information, 'cause we're way cool with any report that comes out, as long as it's accurate. As long as it's accurate, good, bad, or indifferent, we can do something with accurate data. And that's what this process has been, and that's very much appreciated. Anything else, Chris, Maria, Mike, Sam?
Just thank you, I know Steve and Vicki for coming to our challenge days this week. Tomorrow, all three of, all four of us are out for our alliances in mental health education cohort.
I'm here all day, cool.
Yeah, close man. So we have a team of K five and a team of six twelve that are attending. And tomorrow's gonna be a really hopeful day because the speaker is talking about a screener, and is very well worth on that. So that is a huge part of our discussion as far as looking at a universal screener for our students, K twelve for mental health, so.
And could you talk about that, could you just share the reach-out that we've had with St. Mary's Springs and Jill? Just a little bit to give them a little feedback about how our co-ops just turned on the athletic field.
So unfortunately, there was a student killed on Friday. That was, you know, obviously really hard for everyone. So this weekend, I contacted Julie Shively, the principal, to kind of see, you know, what can we do, what can we, how can we help? John Resop, who I worked with when I was at Oshkosh North, contacted Jill and I and said, hey, we would like, you know, if your culture would feel comfortable to shadow Trent's schedule and kind of be in all of those classes. And Jill, when I talked with her, she said unfortunately, this is a strength of hers, that she's had to do this frequently in support. So Jill spent the day at Springs. I talked to her briefly afterwards, and, you know, obviously, like everyone there, I'm sure, you know, very draining, but she was glad that she was there to support. I think that they did a very, you know, it was a very unique thing, and a few of us have talked, obviously, he was a football player. He was a junior, his number was sixty-two, and Springs scored sixty-two points Friday. And they actually scored sixty-two points at ten nineteen, which is unfortunately when the accident happened on Friday. So Springs did a lot. They were scheduled to have a challenge day tomorrow, they've actually moved that to next Tuesday. They started this morning with a two-hour delay to kind of get their teachers together and talk. One of the things that Jill shared, that I talked with Erin about, is that her experience is it is nice to let that school know that we support, and it's often a struggle what we do. So we talked about having festival foods, which, again, working with Erin, to have them do, just to do a cookie that says S M S A, F D L, and that we would have students, trying to wait to hear from Julie Shively, whether it be Thursday morning or Friday morning, that a group of our football players, a group of students who know Springs students, and because we co-op in a couple of sports, those teams, wrestling, cross-country soccer, that members of those teams would be present to hand a cookie to every, you know, with a little ribbon, and that was, to every single student that went into Springs, just to say, hey, we're here for you, so. Yeah, very tough situation, we hope our, we don't have to go through it, but obviously, it's still, it's close to home.
All right, so that's what we have. Anything from the board that you have, any inquiries with the administrative team? How's everything going, Adam Treger, new board member? Sister left, but that, I think, was just 'cause of Tiny.
She had a bit of a drive, right?
Such with all their insurance information, let us. All right, so then what we can do is, we'll move on, we have three things. First off, insurance. We've answered questions, do you want to have a motion on having, so the motion would be that we would have W A Trust as our medical insurance for the two thousand nineteen calendar year.
I guess, I would be a favorite, and we might as well do it, then if we all are ready to move, I don't know. That anything can change, it did sound like there were any deal breakers that might come up in the next few days, but I'm sure if there is, we can actually revisit.
So this is January to January third?
December thirty-first, yep.
It's not school year, so.
Our insurance is calendar.
Can I just ask one question, and it's from Maria? Maria, so if the vitality piece like just goes nuts, unlike, what, what is like the plan for like covering the cost of all of the small items?
That all comes from the insurance company. Yep, the district does not contribute toward that at all. We have something similar with, I believe it was W P S?
Oh, U H C.
Yep, very similar program, where if you did certain things, you would get, you know, maybe it was a ten-dollar gift card or a fifty-dollar gift card. We don't know what those, I'm sorry yet, but it does not come out of district funds.
I mean, my employer has the Go Three Sixty-five, and it went, it exploded, and then we had to figure out and find loans to cover all the kayaks that we gave away. So it was a little bit like, oops.
Now, from my understanding, it's a whole different company that W A Trust hires to run this program. And as Alex said, it's baked into the premium, I heard.
So I think, just from the financial standpoint, it's, you know, there's a certain responsibility, like Steve said, to watch out for the expenses. Sounds like it's an advantage because we're planning for a rent increase and a mortgage increase. You know, I think the only, the only two downsides in my opinion is the stigma that comes from moving every year. But it sounds like there's a lot of people who are doing that at least every other year. And the potential for a double rigid increase next year is a little unnerving, but I think you could have that with anyone you want to.
We could go six and a half this year and seven next year, be the same thing.
Our increase because we're on a calendar year. Technically, would only be six and a half percent. So you have to average that, and we're averaging the cost savings as well, because it's only going to be six months of our fiscal year.
So the hundred and sixty thousand savings really correlates to eighty thousand savings.
For this fiscal year. The other eighty will be in the next fiscal year.
So what's the board's pleasure?
I will move that we have W A as the medical trust for two thousand nineteen. What did I say?
Yeah. Should be two thousand nineteen.
All right, I hear a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I hear a motion and second, that we recommend changing to W A for the transfer for next year. Any further questions or discussions?
Just one quick thing, you know, I don't mean to overstate the fact about jumping. I think Alex said, in health insurance, it's not as big a deal. But, you know, and casually, what I'm used to, with comp and stuff like that, they really wanna develop a relationship with you so you can, they can come in, there are lots of prevention people that can come in and help you avoid accidents and things like that. And there's an element to that with the vitality program or whatever with health insurance. But I think it's worth it for the money, the savings.
And we run our wellness pretty much anyways. I mean, with Renee and Pam, they're paid, we run our wellness pretty well here anyways. And one thing that I have learned with jumping around, there's, with health insurance, they might say they're buying our business, they're not losing money on us. There's a reason why G H T doesn't wanna lose us, and there's a reason why our employees will continue to work hard to keep their input more. So I think, I've learned so much about that, and one thing with Alex too, is there's only like five groups out there now. You know, and of those five, maybe only three can be competitive, you know? So our biggest thing is usage and wellness, and whoever wants to, hopefully in time, we're the ones who cover ourselves. You know, that's gonna be the best cost savings we can add, as long as we get other things, but.
Isn't W A nonprofit, or?
No.
We wouldn't have recommended this for two points or even three. We actually met on Thursday, Erin and Bonnie and I, and we said, okay, what's our threshold? And we had thrown out, consider it for zero. I was surprised we actually got zero, so here we are.
Ed should be great character to him, he's a doctor's, like people, I think just recognition of the name, people will be like, Mark? Even though it's a different organization now, but, yeah.
Any other questions or discussions from the board? Mary Ann, roll call vote, please.
Kowalski, yes, Paula.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
Stuck onto it.
Yes.
Should you arrest him?
I don't think I have, because it covers everybody, not just her, I would say.
All right. Motion carries.
Number two, discuss and consider limited employment contract with Tom.
Mabel, like Dana.
Okay.
So Tom comes via Sheboygan School District, we didn't think we'd have an option to have. A school psychologist could do some things, I'll turn it over to Chris really quick and just kind of explain what he's doing.
So Tom is helping our sixth through twelfth grade staff, special ed staff, with evaluations for special education, initials and reevals. Now, there's a lot of paperwork involved with that, a lot of testing, so Tom comes with a wealth of experience. So he's helping with that, and then also with our birth to three evaluations. So we'd like to have him hired as part-time, just through the end of the school year, and then we'll revisit it and hopefully have a full-time psychologist next year for sixty-twelve.
We're already signed up to go to the Cowan Army, or?
Mhm, Trula de Vista.
Trula Vista, yep, so where we, that's where we got Liz, that's the psychologists that are graduating and people who wanna look for other employment. So we're signed up to go and do some recruiting there. All right, so Tom's not the long-term thing, he's just right now helping us out, and he understands that.
And he's retired from somewhere.
He retired what, in August?
He retired in August as a special ed director and psychologist for the Sheboygan School District, so he just.
So he was Chris's role in Sheboygan.
So he just can jump in and do the work, we require a lot of training, so that was nice.
I just told him he's gotta slow down on his days, he's using lateral.
Yeah, I told him, can't burn up your days so quick, he's contracted for seven, so.
All right, what's the board's pleasure on limited employment contract?
I like the motion too. Prove the contract is valid.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further questions? And Erin, all, every ten roll call vote, please.
Park.
Yes.
Stepbacher?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kowalski, yes.
Right, passed unanimously. And third and last, budget report and discuss and establish the eighteen-nineteenth school levy and tax reform.
All right.
Saving the best for last.
So I have, behind you, I have the summary. You've seen both, both the detail and the one that was put in the report. Gonna pass this over to Maria, she's gonna talk about changes. We, our recommendation is, we make no changes to what's being reported. Recommend passing what's being reported, and then we would do a budget revision in the spring, that if there's other things, it would take care of. So in essence, what we're asking you is to pass a budget that's a deficit that we already know won't be a deficit. If that makes sense. But it just, it's cleaner if we pass the budget the way it is right now, and then as we have always done in the spring, come back, revisit it, do the budget adjustments then, because we report our spending to D P I through our audit at the end of the year and through the board actions of budget revision. So in the conversation Maria's gonna have, just remember, our recommendation is, what she's gonna present is what we recommend passing, but know that there are already revisions to it. Maria.
Okay, thank you. There, as we talked last week, there were some changes to the equalized aid that I had given you, that equalized aid number, because that information had just come out that morning. And we talked about the F T E difference, and the revenue limit was very close to what was projected. So the, some of the new information we got, and that's in that second paragraph, was the private school vouchers, which I was surprised to see. In the past, it's been about thirty-eight thousand dollars that we paid out in private school vouchers. And I think that was the last two years in a row. It jumped up to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Is that because there's more?
More students that went to, or that received vouchers to go to private school.
It'd be very, yeah, that doesn't mean kids left here to go there. That means kids that were already there now qualified for the vouchers because of their parents' earning. So then, even though they were there already paying, the majority of them now get the vouchers. And that money comes directly from our taxpayers, it's passed right on to the taxpayers. Now, there's nothing separate on the tax bill, but the taxpayers know that everybody in our district is paying, taking and dividing a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars to go to private school voucher program. And five-alack, we're talking over half a million to a million dollars. I talked to the teacher, the superintendent in Chilton during the volleyball thing, they're about the same as us. They went from like thirty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. And that just came out for us. As you'll see, we are over levying in order to pay off debt early. So this increase, our taxpayers would see, there's some districts that are strapped at the revenue limit, aren't bothering above. So this comes on, and all of a sudden, their taxes go up a couple, two, three, four, five percent with nothing, unless the district wants to soak it up and cut their own programs, which they can do, but I don't know why they do it. So it's a, it's a really interesting emotion that we get when this number comes.
Yeah, it was. So that was an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars this year. And we don't get that information until the October fifteenth, eighth certification. So, yeah, that was, that was new news. We also received additional revenue though, of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in state aid for exempt computers, exempt personal property, and high-poverty districts. The high-poverty districts we, and the exempt computers we receive every year. The high-poverty districts, I believe, is, it's a little over a hundred thousand, and the exempt computers is around ten thousand. And then the rest was the personal property. So with that information, I redid the budget, and I projected a deficit of fifty-seven thousand, four sixty-five. And that included the five percent insurance increase, which we figured was going to be the worst-case scenario, was the five percent. Like Alex said, information came this morning that we got down to a zero.
So not only a zero, we're saving twenty-four thousand dollars from your services also.
Yeah, so it's looking like, you know, all things, looking at it today, it would be a surplus of about fifteen thousand. So virtually even. And it could get better with H R A utilization, we'll be taking a look at that, and we'll monitor that throughout the year. So, so that's where we stand budget-wise. The decision that we need to make tonight is how much we're going to levy. And as we promised last week, I have three options listed there. Option one is with no over levy. So we would levy exactly what, and the over levy can only happen in referendum debt. So, so this would be absolutely no over levy in our referendum debt. And that would drop our mill rate from ten dollars and twenty-seven cents to nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Now, remember also, when we talked about if we would do that, in the next few years, we're gonna be able to take advantage of increasing our revenue limit. And if we would do that and drop it down to this level, that increase would increase taxes. So this also, as we had talked earlier about that, we don't need to go to referendum for more high school space quite yet. We could in three or four years, this then creates that barrier, or that cushion, if you will, that we utilized in order to lessen that impact and pay off our debts. So if we would go to nine forty-seven, then even if our, we, that would be anything more after this year, we wouldn't be able to, it would just keep going up and up and up. Now, that would be, it's just, there's a psychological thing, plus, we know that we'll have an opportunity to use that, that level and still maintain tax level.
And that is not prepaying any of our debt either, so. So that's option one. I'm gonna jump to option three, and that is the option that we had been talking about for the last month or so.
And that got passed by the?
Yes, and that's a mill rate of ten dollars and twenty-six cents, and that's over levying a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So that would end up in the fund thirty-nine, or the referendum debt, fund balance. It would either offset future debt or it's prepaying debt. So, you know, there's interest savings there. It also stabilizes our levy, which is right now at ten twenty-seven. So there's some advantages to doing that. It helps, like Erin said, it's kind of a psychological thing almost, where it's, you know, it's not gonna jump two dollars and when we go to referendum, it's gonna be a more gradual stepping of that mill rate. So that's, those are the two extremes that we were looking at. Option two is kind of in the middle. It would be a mill rate of ten dollars and ten cents. It is an over levy of three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. It's still, it obviously lowers that mill rate a little bit. I think it shows the community that we really do pay attention to that, and that we do take those things, and we take the community members into consideration, the taxpayers into consideration when we make these decisions. But we also are looking to the future and trying to somewhat stabilize that mill rate so that it's not a big shock when we do need to increase it.
So option two creates that ability for us to increase our revenue caps in the future, or if we have another special or voucher thing, or if we look later on to, if our, if our aid changes. Remember, we had a jump of eight hundred and some odd. But yet, as Maria said, that's a, that's like a 1% to 2% decrease in taxes. Now, Friendship, now the village in North Fan Lake went down 10% in their equalized value, Friendship went up, the town of Fan Lake went up, so even if we stayed stable this year, Friendship's taxes would go up because they're paying a different levy or a different part of it, because their value, they went from like 32%, or 31% of the value to 32 point something. North Fan Lake went from like 34 to 33, the village. So by doing this too, this says to Friendship, the town of Fan Lake, we know that your impact because of the differentiation of that equalized value, that it would lessen that increase also to, I mean, North Fan, like the village, would go down a little more, but Friendship probably would stay around stable, we would think, because of this. So it's still over levying, still gives us a lot of flexibility, but you, as board members, could say we reduced taxes too.
The current mill rate is 1027, you said?
Yeah.
And we recommend that second option.
I'm in favor of that. I think that's wise to do it that way.
I agree. Yeah?
And this is a new, right, we've over levied recent years also.
Past five, six, seven, eight years. There's just so many variables now, especially when you look at, at $138,000 in vouchers. If we were taxed, if we were already levying, then we were at our revenue limit, right? That would be addition, so we would have came to you guys and said, oh, by the way, what we had passed at annual meeting, that has to increase because we need to pay this, or we have to cut programs.
Yep, that's a perfect example.
So this gives us, so that's not there. Also, when, after next year, we were at 9435 or something like that, we get to levy up to 9500, now we got that $65 per kid, that could be another $150,000 that we can add, and it wouldn't have a negative impact on taxpayers' bill. If we have lower aid, that's also something that can have a positive, that does do that. And then on the flip side, if we have to go to referendum in a few years because we have to add on to the high school, this helps to create that opportunity and pay down our debt too. But still, a tax for aid.
I like that you say if we go to referendum, rather than, Maria was kind of touching like it's a ongoing conclusion, so no tax.
No, that's fine.
Free and only if that happens. No, 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 she did, but that's okay. We have different ways of using words, and that's why we work really well together, because we don't see eye to eye and everything.
Those kids have to go somewhere, right?
Yeah. That's true. I'll make the motion, then two.
It would say to make a motion to set the tax levy rate, or amount of $5,305,559. So you'd say your tax levy in total, or tax rate in total levy of that number, of the $5,305,559. Then that, what that does is that goes in, and then that gets crunched into how, who pays what and where.
What do you say?
All right, motion on the floor, two, take action, number two.
I'll second.
Second. All right, motion on the floor, it's seconded. Any further questions or discussion? So the motion is to set the total levy at $5,359, $5,590, and say a $10.10.
The mill rate's not part of that, because that changes for different homes, so it's just that number.
All right. I just have one question for Maria, I'm glad we passed it, but you said option three was kind of another extreme example. Is it really extreme?
Not an extreme. It's, I shouldn't have said it that way, probably. I, I showed you option one, which is no over levy, and then option three is the, kind of the ceiling that we were looking at.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we can go higher, we can definitely go higher.
We could go to 15.
Yeah, but it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't something that we had talked about in the past, so I was just talking about option one and option three being an accident of the spectrum, kind of.
And option three is what was at the annual meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was expecting. Okay, thanks for that. I just didn't know if like, that's like as high as we could over levy.
No, we can go as high.
And we could go to like 50 bucks and take care of that right away, and we'd all find new jobs.
Hitchforks. I don't live in the village, they have to come overseas to find us.
All right, so motion on the floor, it's seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Sign on, roll call vote please.
Park.
Yes.
Podolski, yes. Parker, yes. Pollak.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Dramatic pause. Good memories.
All right, so that takes care of item number three, and a new business, that is the end of the published agenda. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion is seconded, roll call vote.
Park.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Podolski, yes. Parker, yes.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you guys, thank you, Abby and Keith. Mary, pleasure to spend the last minute.